Let's resume the budget filings.
Okay, very good. The next item on the budget schedule is our Economic Development Program. And of course, this program is probably in front of the council in one way or another more often than anything else that we've been doing in the last year or so. And that's a good thing. That means that we're making progress. And much as I kind of made an editorial comment in the last section on our capital program, of course, being able to make progress on our capital investment in the community in the downturn, we've also been making a real good progress on our Economic Development Program, which, as you all know, has been challenging in this economy. A lot of companies are not expanding, they're not growing, they're not relocating, and informed by our Economic Development Implementation Strategy. Our approach has been very much focused on the kinds of businesses and investments that make sense, given our geography, both physical geography and also economic geography. And because we've been following that well-informed program, we've been making quite a bit of progress. And so therefore, Scott and his staff have been before you fairly frequently, bringing various projects, bringing exclusive negotiating agreements, and actually bringing development agreements themselves that have been very beneficial in terms of bringing high-wage jobs to the community, and also informing future decisions, like the discussion we had last night with First Strategic around this table. So what we have now is an update on the Economic Development Program and an opportunity for council to discuss that program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Great. Thank you for that, and a pleasure to be before you, Mayor, City Council. As you may recall, on February 5th, we had a study session where I kind of outlined the current status and situation of the various projects. And at the conclusion of that study session, we posed three questions for us all to ruminate on as we anticipated this next step in the discussion. And these three questions were what we left with at the conclusion. Some things to think about is what are the council's priority EDIS initiatives? And on that point, as we know, the EDIS is a long-term economic development program that builds on success towards a diversified economy. And it does that in a number of ways. One is through higher education, technology, advanced manufacturing, and innovation. That cluster of activity has had recent successes in the form of Maxwell Technologies, in the form of Trine University, Huntington University, College of St. Scholastica, Blue Ocean, as we heard last night, and certainly BioInspire. That's an important body of work as that establishes our innovation economy platform for which we hope that we can, you know, take it to the next level and continue to grow that program, as that's going to, I believe, yield us the high-paying jobs, the high-education-level positions, and the technology that we seek here as part of the EDIS. But it also has initiatives that deal with redevelopment and reuse, such as in the Old Town, such as in the Entertainment District with the PSP project and P-83 Improvement Projects. And then certainly, greenfield pre-development activities to position ourselves for employment growth in the future, such as in the Vestancia Commercial Core and the Rovi Industrial Park. So all of those components together are a number of projects that, since the EDIS was adopted in December of 2010, we've been bringing forward for your consideration. So as we reflect on those initiatives, you know, I thought I'd just kind of, in a nutshell, just kind of reflect on how we've been pursuing them and how recent successes, as Carl has mentioned, has kind of translated. Also, what economic development projects should the Economic Development Services Department not focus on? And that was a question posed back in February 5th, realizing that, you know, there is a robust body of projects that has been brought before you, in light of the fact of being the worst economy in 50 years, which is the good news. The challenge is, my view, a structural malalignment between a long-term growth program and a funding program that is predominantly short-term and one-time. Okay? So one of the things that can be done to mitigate that is to identify projects or areas where perhaps there is less interest on the part of council, so that we're focusing what available resources we have and time resources on those areas. Because as we'll talk about tonight, there is a small amount of money that's available for allocation, but once it's gone, it's gone. And so we just want to make sure that we're doing the will of the council in terms of the program. But I also thought it important to take a moment to really express thanks to you, the City Council, that made this all possible. If it wasn't for your vision and commitment to support these types of programs, none of this would happen. And I also think it's important to recognize and thank EDAB for their vision and their help in forming these policies. So with that, then, I think that leads us to the third question, which is how should available funding be allocated? Through discussions tonight, we're going to talk about projects that are funded through the CIP, or I should say, proposed to be funded through the CIP, in full. We're also going to talk about those that are partially funded, such as the P-83 Improvement Project. It's a three-phase project. Phase one is funded, phase two and three are not, as well as BioInspire. The CIP shows funding for fiscal year '14, being year three of a five-year program, years four and five are not. So those are considerations for us to kind of mull over as we go through some of the projects. So with that, as kind of a backdrop, some of the existing projects that we're pursuing. Again, this tier of projects that you may recall seeing on this document that was used on February 5th is distinguished from the others, as the existing projects are those projects that have executed agreements, existing city obligations. For BioInspire, it's in the form of an operating grant agreement and a ground lease with Plaza Companies. Trine University, in terms of an economic development agreement. Maxwell Technologies, again, an economic development agreement. So I thought I'd just take a moment and kind of go through these projects and their current status in the CIP. BioInspire, as I mentioned, is funded for FY '14, is not funded currently for years four or five. That would be $1.6 million per year four and per year five. Just something for us to consider. Should the city decide to continue with that program?
This is the third year of BioInspire, is it?
Yes. So that's just something for consideration. Trine University is fully funded per our DA obligation, as listed in the CIP page. Maxwell Technologies, similarly, is fully funded per our DA obligation. The commercial rehab program is not, and so it would be of benefit to us to understand if the council desires to continue that program or to hold it in abeyance at this point in time. The P-83 Public Improvement Project, as you heard during Andy's presentation, is an exciting project. And again, phase one is funded, phases two and three are not. The Peoria Sports Park Mixed Use Redevelopment Project in the Entertainment District, with our anticipated participation being in the form of financing a parking garage, based on what we believe the number to be is financed at this point in time, using the $2.175 million that has been set aside annually for that project, to service what we anticipate to be debt for the parking garage. So in terms of the ongoing monies out of the half-cent sales tax fund that are available for economic development, it's largely consumed, in fact entirely consumed, through the garage for that project. Okay? And then, of course, the Vestancia Commercial Core project, which is an important project to open up the commercial core for business attraction, executed development agreement, and that El Mirage Road project is funded. So those are the projects that we have a pathway forward on, for some partially, but for most of them, fully. In terms of upcoming projects, the logic bridge there being, these are projects that have exclusive negotiating agreements but have not yet matured to a development agreement stage. So there, we have Huntington University, again, executed ENA, not currently funded. College of St. Scholastica, not funded. Blue Ocean Biomanufacturing, not funded. Copper Cactus Distillery, that we just heard last night, not funded. And Rovi Industrial Park, not funded, although I think that's probably more of a fiscal year '15 consideration, as we still have considerable work to do in '14.
The funding that you're showing for Huntington and Scholastica and Blue Ocean, these are the best guess?
Best guesses at this point. But I would caveat that by saying we've not yet received their final proposals.
Okay. So the negotiations are underway?
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Ames?
Yeah. How come Trine isn't on this list? Aren't we funding this year?
It's in the capital improvement project as a funded project. So this is just the projects that are not fully funded or are partially funded, or unfunded. With actually, you know, the Vestancia Commercial Core projects should probably come out, because that is fully funded per the CIP.
So what projects are fully funded, then? Or that aren't on here?
The projects that are fully funded are on page CIP-2. That is the EDS/CIP page. So what you see is, you see the Bioscience Incubator, fiscal year '14, fully funded at $1.6 million. You see an Economic Development Opportunity Fund at a million, about 1.1. Actually, that number has been updated to $2.828 million, which we'll talk about a little bit later on, in terms of available one-time money that's available for allocation. Genome Identification Corp., as you may recall, we have an executed development agreement for $300,000. That's been fully funded. We have a land assembly fund. Now, that's unencumbered balance at this point in time, $2.986 million, that's available for land acquisition. Now, that's geo-bond funded, so it's limited and restricted to land acquisition, but it's available for that. We have Maxwell Technologies, that over a three-year period meets our $1.5 million obligation per the development agreement. We have our Mixed Use Redevelopment Project. We see in year '15 that $30 million hit. Really, that's an expression of the capitalized value of $2.175 million annually over an anticipated 20-year debt term. Okay? So that's really an expression of what we believe the parking garage to cost, and the amount that that revenue stream would generate for purposes of debt. Then we have an Old Town Commercial Rehabilitation Program balance of about $124,000. We have the P-83 Entertainment District Improvements. Phase one of '14, which I believe is the design work, and then the '15 money being the construction work. So that gets us to phase one, but only phase one. Trine University, over two fiscal years, gets us to our obligation per the DA. And then we have the commercial core at $6.7 million funded for our obligation in that DA. So those are the projects that are on the funded side, with the caveats I mentioned. We have projects that are unfunded, and again, that's Huntington University, it's College of St. Scholastica, Blue Ocean, Rovi, Copper Cactus. For those projects that are unfunded, that have dollar amounts articulated, that's our best estimate at this time. And then we certainly have projects, such as Peoria Town Center and Smithy's, that was part of the presentation last night, that we've heard interest expressed as part of the work plan going forward. So this is the current status of the projects. And so what we would be happy to do is try and answer any questions you might have. And...
No, go back. Nope, go back.
And get feedback.
Go back one more. Go back one more.
Back one more.
Right there.
There's an important line at the bottom there.
An important line at the bottom.
Important line at the bottom.
There you go.
Which refers to the...
There's the $2.828.
The uncommitted available one-time fund balance that does, that is available for, to commit to a number of these or any one of these that council may have an interest in doing. This is really a status. It tells us where you are. You're not, you do not have to commit any of those dollars at this time, but if you would like to, those are, that's the amount that we have available in one time.
This is one time, could be for anything, or just for economic development?
For economic development.
It's in the budget right now.
We have not, yes, we have it available in the budget. We have not allocated it to a specific project.
Okay.
It's one-time funds?
It's one-time funds, yes.
But we can roll it over?
Yes.
And over?
Yes.
And over.
If you need to.
If we need. Okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, Mayor, are we going to be voting on either not allocating any of the $2.8, or possibly allocating, so I know?
Well, we don't vote on anything.
We're not voting on anything?
No, no, we can't vote. We can reach consensus, but we can't vote on anything.
Later, we can vote.
Yep. So, for example, if you say, okay, let's take the $2.8 and open up a giant ice cream cone stand, the consensus would be no.
Okay.
I'm taking a lot of guesses. So I mean, if you want to propose a use for that or commit, or to commit it now, we can do one of two things. We can, we can decide consensus, we don't want to do that, or we can, I guess we could boot it to tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Mr. White, we have three different groups here, existing, upcoming, and future. The two items that are in the future, Peoria Town Center and Smithy's demo, these are projects that are not new. We've been discussing them for a while, correct?
Yes. Those projects have been under discussion for some time.
Okay. Well, I want to make a case for both of those projects, and I'll start with Peoria Town Center. In October, there was a purchase of the building by a new owner who was serious in making something happen in the old Walmart. There's some of them in the downtown, specifically east of 85th Avenue on Grand. We have that location that is, has some life to it. Recently, ADOT invested over $6 million on improvements on Grand Avenue. With that said, I would like to see the council allocate some money set aside for the Peoria Town Center contingent on an end user coming in. And it's something that you and I have talked about, Mr. White. I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for a facade of the old Walmart, rather allocating seven, I know our consultant last night said 1.5. I'm willing to compromise on the $750,000 set aside for something to happen at the old Walmart if an end user comes in. That's for Peoria Town Center. In regards to the Smithys, this is an ongoing conversation that I've had with staff for the last two years. There is no end in sight for these Smithys. I believe if the city doesn't get involved, nothing will happen for a long time. I know there's a specific strategy on how to do this, and something that we've discussed with our economic development staff, our city attorney. I would like to see part of the land, I forget what the name of the fund, but...
Strategic Land Assembly Fund.
I would like to see $500,000 allocated from that, from that fund for the purchase or negotiation of a purchase with the people involved in the Smithy's deal. So those are my two requests.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I'm not proposing a request at this point, but I'm looking at the fiscal year 2014 budget that's in the white sheets, like the other budgets. And then this sheet, which looks at unfunded and including some that are shortfall. But you have two here, Vestancia Commercial Core and Strategic Land Assembly, that are really fully funded, right? And Vestancia Commercial Core, I mean, that specifically goes there. What Mr. Rivera was talking about is Strategic Land Assembly. We haven't identified where that might go.
Correct. There's not been a decision point on the use of those funds yet, in the land assembly fund.
But Vestancia Commercial Core, we have.
Correct.
So I'm wondering why it's on this list, then?
The primary reason that that is on that list at this time is that we have not, we have committed those funds to that project, and we are moving forward with that project. But at this point, we haven't expended any of those dollars. We're just representing those where we don't, we, you know, we haven't committed, we haven't actually spent those dollars. But you are correct, it's funded. That's the project that we've identified to spend it on. It's funded through transportation sales tax and water, you know, water utility funds and wastewater utility funds. So it's probably not one that is really involved in this discussion as much as far as, you know, do you want to do it or not? It's more of a, we just want to make sure that it's represented, that that's been there and that we haven't fully expended or expended any of those funds yet.
But if we go back to Trine, we haven't spent everything there either, and that isn't on this list.
That is correct, and we do have an agreement with them, and so we have a set obligation there. The timing for the six...
Anyway, I have it all in my head.
Right.
Regardless of, if it appears twice or only once.
Just look at, sometimes, you know, some of these projects don't fit neatly into boxes, but I think that's what you're identifying.
If I could, rather than commit money to Peoria Town Center or Smithy's, I would say we leave the one-time funding uncommitted, should anything develop with the Town Center or with the Smithys, because we don't know if they'd be willing to deal with us or not at this point in time. Leave that $2.8 out there, and if anything else comes in, we could at least theoretically go up to the commercial rehab, which is the facade program, and you have $2.2 million there that we could put on hold, so to speak, and not proceed immediately with that, in case something else big comes in. Or you need funding to do Huntington, Scholastica, Blue Ocean, Rovi, and Copper Cactus. Rather than commit specific funds to specific events, why don't we leave that money set aside? We know we have, I'm going to call them flex dollars, which is not a nice thing to say, in the unfunded category, for anything that comes forward. And then you theoretically have plenty of money, and you deal with them as they occur. I mean, I would hate to commit to spending money to demo Smithy's and get a nice vacant lot, running the risk of losing Huntington, or run the risk of something else that didn't come in. So why not just leave it all pending and then deal with it as it happens? That would be my suggestion. Ms. Carla?
Yeah, I have to agree with that. I mean, we've had some fairly detailed conversations with Blue Ocean Manufacturing, Biomanufacturing, at Rovi Industrial Park. Copper Cactus, I mean, he was sitting in our audience last night here, and we voted on that. These are things that are really active, and yet they're totally unfunded for $2.5 million. And we're going to need those funds for these if they come forward.
Well, we don't know how much that'll work out as.
Right.
And we don't know if they will come forward successfully.
No, we don't.
Simpson College in the Vestancia Commercial Core is a great example. They looked really interested in doing it, bringing their college into it. We met with them multiple times, it probably lasted more than a year, and it turned out it was a duh. They couldn't commit to it. And we've had several other colleges do it, too. So with all these others unfunded or possible things, there's no commitment to the million dollars for Huntington. They might go away. Or they might come in with numbers that are so great that we don't want them at that cost. So to commit funds to something that may or may not happen seems foolish. Leave it all pending and then deal with it as it happens.
I agree. I think earmarking funds is only tying our own hands. It's restricting us, the very people who need to be able to use these as something comes up that's urgent for the city.
The reason I disagree with the Councilman, Carla, is I don't think it is tying our hands. What I'm saying is setting this money aside, if an end user comes in, in the meantime, council can always come back and change their mind. If something comes up that's pressing, something that's important, council could easily come back in a meeting and remove those funds from Peoria Town Center or the Smithy's demo to whatever the new project is.
That's true.
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Why do it at all?
Well...
Conversely, if something came in tomorrow and we have this available, then we can discuss putting it there on the Peoria Town Center, for example, right?
Because there's new ownership and at least we've been led to believe...
And this is just this year, next year we'll have another budget, so...
Oh, absolutely.
If something happens quickly on Peoria Town Center, then we're going to want to discuss it.
So first come, first served kind of thing.
Almost.
Yeah, but we may still not...
The $2.8.
How it comes, but...
Right. We've got...
That's why I asked if we could roll that $2.8 over.
But this $2.5 is also unfunded.
$2.5?
The upcoming column.
She's looking at the...
Oh, upcoming.
Projected unfunded costs for Huntington, et cetera.
And that's in addition to this, no, that adds into the two, yeah, okay.
What I would suggest we do on this is let's, let's hold up on phase three of the rehab downtown, which frees up, theoretically frees up or flexes $2.2 million. You add that to the $2.8, and then your other possibility of reducing some of the others.
I apologize, I need to make a clarification point here. What we're showing in that unfunded is truly unfunded, so there is no $2.2 million for commercial rehab phase three. Everything in that category is expressed interest or projects that we have undergone or that phases of projects that we potentially, council may want to do, but right now they're unfunded. So what you're looking at here, if you add up those three columns, you've got about a 20, you know, $21 million of unfunded projects and $2.8 million of available funding to deal with some of those, obviously, not all of those, unless we have, unless we can, you know, generate additional revenue in some way, or, again, one of the big projects where the majority of the funding is currently allocated is in that Peoria Sports Park project that you see on there. We have dedicated through the half-cent sales tax, $2.175 million ongoing every year, and that's, as Scott had mentioned, is there to service that debt, assuming that project, and you'll see the economic analysis, you just approved a contract for that, that will be coming forward in May, and you'll be making decisions in the next year as to whether or not that's a project you want to go forward with. But as it stands right now, what you see on the unfunded column are those, those items that have been expressed as an interest or have been going along as projects that we don't have funding for but for the $2.8 one time.
And that $30 million there is really contingent on doing P-83, right? And that's a big amount of money that...
Yes. I mean, when you take into account the P-83 Improvement Project and the PSP Redevelopment Project, yeah, that adds up to a sizable sum.
And I notice Old Town Commercial Rehabilitation for fiscal year 2014, we have $123, $938. Is that already committed? Is that like a carryover?
Yes, that is a carryover from...
And that's committed?
And that's committed. To phase two, yes.
We've already spent that already, yeah. We haven't paid it out yet.
Right.
Okay. I might add a little bit to this idea that if something comes and we also see something else is close, then we can kind of discuss them together, right? If it's like, it looks like it's going to happen, but it hasn't moved to that next kind of more absolute level. Yeah, I mean, we can look at whatever we want, right?
I think we're getting into sort of circular argument. I mean, if we decide to assign or set aside money for the Town Center and the demolition, and something comes up, we would, we might pull those funds away anyhow. So what difference does it make whether we set it aside or whether we just let everything float and deal with them as they come forward?
The difference is, Mayor, I'm going to be in conversations with the new owner at the Walmart. Our staff is going to be in conversations with the new owner. I want to show some commitment from the city of Peoria versus, versus having nothing set aside for Peoria Town Center. And I respect your argument, I also respect Councilmember Ames and everybody else's argument on this council. I just want to go on the record to show support for the projects in the district that I represent, and if I'm the only one voting for it, so be it.
I'm not sensing a consensus here yet. Do we want to float everything, not assign or set money aside for anything that is otherwise currently funded, and then deal with them as they happen?
That would be my preference.
Good man. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, yesterday, we listened to Wes Gulla talk about Grand Avenue and the importance of cleaning that up. And frankly, it's a blighted area. It is the gateway... It is the gateway to our community, so I understand the vice mayor's concern very clearly. If we, as a council, probably need to make some commitment that if something comes up with his conversations with the owner, and then we have the ability to move that money, that we move that money into the Town Center or the Smithy's demo. I do understand the importance of cleaning that Smithy's up and taking care of it. So I don't think we need to commit the money just yet, but I think as a council, we need to make a commitment that we will take a good, solid look at that, should something happen in his conversations with the owner.
I would hope that any proposal that comes forward, we take a good, solid look at.
And I think the Smithy's is important in terms of Old Town, but also in terms of Grand Avenue. We've had quite a bit of beautification through ADOT and ourselves, but some of the side toward Peoria High School looks okay, but on our side, it looks pretty bad, and that is a bad image for the city overall, not just for Old Town, so I think it has some additional importance. But that's a little different than what we're discussing. That's just, we're just talking about some of our sentiment here, and the vice mayor can certainly, you know, talk about this. We have this uncommitted amount, and do something quickly at Peoria Town Center, so we can...
The conversation would be, this money is available if the project comes through.
Correct.
Correct?
And I think this council has been very consistent in making economic development a priority, and I think that's, you know, the conversation should be led with that. And, you know, we mean that, and we mean it, and you can see obviously that we mean it by putting the strategy together and by trying to carry it out with every budget and all of our CIP funding. So, I mean, I think we have said, this is what we want to do as a council, and we have shown that this is what we want to do as a council, so, you know, it's not something that we've wavered from ever.
So should we try for consensus? Let everything float and deal with it as it comes forward? Yes or no? Yes? No?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Carla?
No.
Yes, so there's your direction.
Mayor and Council, just how we'll deal with that within the budget is we will identify those uncommitted funds in the half-cent sales tax in the contingency appropriation, so when that time sees fit that you would like to utilize that funding, it will come forward to you in a council action formally.
Anything else?
That's it.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.